Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order if we could stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
My chair at home does not roll around quite so freely as the one here got them used to it. All right, council, next item on the agenda is the moment of silence. Does anyone have any one they would like to bring up? Anyone online? No, don't see any hands. All right, we could just bow our heads for a moment. Okay, thank you very much. Just for those in the room, I don't think people on TV can hear. The British players did not realize that our meetings were now on Wednesdays, so they are doing auditions tonight, but they've moved down to the other end. So if you hear a little piano in the background, that's what's going on, but they're not above us. They're closer to the entrance to the drill hall, so.
We had a packed meeting tonight.
Oh, from the cars. Yeah, that's British players. Everybody received the minutes for the closed meeting and the public session on the 13th. I did not see any emails regarding any changes to the minutes. So someone wants to make a motion to approve the minutes for the town council meeting, the closed session.
I'll move to approve the town council meeting minutes for the closed session for February 13th, 2024.
Is there a second?
My second.
All right, all is in favor? Okay, need a motion for the public session on the 13th?
I'll continue it. I'll move to approve the town council meeting minutes for February 13th, 2024, public session.
Okay, is there a second?
Aye.
All is in favor? All right. That'll make it easier for Susan on the just ditto. Okay, all right, we're just on move down to the mayor and town council under acknowledgement. We did send a letter to the Transportation Environmental Committee of Montgomery County requesting that the proposed Summit Avenue Extension Project be included and adequately funded within the county FY25 CIP. We have the next, anybody have any questions about that? You want to further discuss that or you want to mention that later in your report that we've been?
We might as well talk about it while you, on top of sending the letter, myself, council member Ingle and the mayor have been reaching out to members of the county council to make sure that they are aware, since we put in the time and effort to undertake a technical assistance panel or a TAF study with ULI, and we have that report and the results. We were updating that information with each of their offices. We reached out, spoke to at least seven, six or seven. We've got one more to go with council member Jawando from last night. Helping them to see the vision that both the town as well as ULI see for Summit Avenue to bring in housing density, to bring in new retail options, but also to create a residential roadway that creates a kind of green bridge between the town of Kensington and Ken Gar with linear parks and increased tree canopy and such. And so it was very well received by members of the county council. And in the committee meeting for transportation and environment, all three members gave very, very supportive comments, two of the three acknowledging that it is one of their, if not their number one, one of the top three priorities for the CIP, so.
Nate, anything else? Okay, anybody have any questions regarding that? Yeah, don't see any hands, so we'll move on. Number two on the agenda is the Love Records. This is a request for a partial street closure. It's between the, I guess, the driveway entrance and Howard Avenue that goes behind Girls Who Paint. So you're not blocking that, right? I need you to come forward, sorry. Just give your name and.
Hi, Rita Francis, can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah.
Rita Francis, Love People Records owner. This would be the driveway actually at Carly's Deli. That way there's an exit ability.
So not very much.
Not very much. I mean, maybe we'll consider it next time, but we don't want to affect any other businesses as much as possible. So, you know, that's where it would start and then to Howard Avenue.
Okay. And what's the plan for the event?
Our plan is to have a rotation of DJs. The event is to celebrate Record Store Day, which is globally recognizing independent record stores all over the world, us being one of them, and, you know, it would just be better to enjoy the weather and have a little bit more space for people to be entertained.
Yeah, because your store is a little small, so it'd be tough to do it.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay, we'll say good, see, that's a better, yes, good. Okay, council, do you have any questions? I think it's great.
Yeah, I'm super supportive. I just was curious if you've spoken with the surrounding businesses about the potential impact that it might have on them, because it is a Saturday, they often rely on, you know, the traffic going through there and being able to park.
Sure, we have considered the three spots that are typically open for traffic. We've spoken with the owners of Carly's Deli. They are supportive and kind of just anxious to hear, you know, what the outcome is of this, really. Anyone else, you know, we've just kind of put something out and said, in the past, we've made it more of an idea, and they've actually been more supportive, sometimes even just throwing the idea our way first. So we kind of just picked off of that and we just have recent support from that.
I guess if we approve it, if we approve it, you would check with the other businesses to just make sure.
Yeah, so for residential street closure, we typically handle it internally. Anytime we do with a commercial street, we bring it to the council because it may affect businesses. We'll provide read and queue with the barricades and provide a notice to the public and staff is supportive of events.
Yeah, I mean, we're not losing a lot of parking here, so. I think it's actually good for particularly the food businesses, because they'll certainly make, you know, they'll cap the people that are there, have them captured.
Yeah, we were, we also, you know, in reaching out to Carly's Deli, we told them the, you know, date that we hope to do the event, well, that we're asking for the event.
Right.
And that they could possibly plan ahead to include themselves in, you know, either offering something in particular. I know that they also kind of have wine and some sort of spirits and the ability to do so, so that would be, I think, beneficial to both of us. And then, yeah, you know, obviously, people are hungry. If we do it most of the day, they can just stay all day and then eat hopefully at the same time, so.
All right, council, any other questions?
Rita, just from your write-up, in between the street closures, I see rotational DJs, what else, like, just give me a quick, what do you envision, tables for food?
Right, well, I think if we can also collaborate with you guys to borrow a few tables, some of the collapsible tables like we have in the past, perhaps some chairs as well, it'd be kind of a somewhat of a loungy space, you know, for music, there's, you know, we always anticipate some sort of dancing or, you know, ability to do that, but it would be a gathering space, it'd be for people to just kind of hang out, you know, and if they spill onto the other stores, that's great too. I mean, we obviously want to support all of our business neighbors especially. And then also, we are considerate of doing things indoors as well for the music. You know, in the past, we want to be a little bit louder, and so being outside helps us to kind of, in a way, contain the noise, you know, where it's just going to a specific crowd. But, yeah, with rotation of DJs, in the past, we've had a couple of DJs go on for about half an hour to an hour, maybe playing, obviously, family-friendly, public-friendly music of all kinds. And just an overall kind of good vibe environment, again, because we are celebrating the independent record store and we're hoping that people come in and buy music, so. We're just hoping to kind of keep that environment, you know, joyous in a, in a sense, so. You know, anything with music, we usually assume everybody's having a good time, so that's the only thing you want to do.
Any questions, Miss Lynn?
No, I am a resident of Fossett Street, so I will be directly impacted, but I think it's a great idea to support an independent business on a day that I think has been becoming more popular and to show that Kensington also has an independent record store is nice. And I just echo the other comments about, you know, working with the businesses and integrating them into the day, and it sounds like you're already thinking that way.
I would definitely suggest that you, on whatever promotions you give, that people could park at Town Hall. I think we can check the calendar, but I don't think during the day on a Saturday is probably much going on. And then they could also park in the parking lot at the St. Paul's Church.
Oh, perfect.
So, you know, I would definitely point out options for people for parking.
Or they can walk and ride their bike.
They could walk and ride their bike, but there is that group that doesn't do that.
Or roll.
Yeah. Yeah, but I mean, it's always helpful, particularly for cars, that they know they have options, that they can park in those two locations.
And then presumably, there'll be a notice to residents that goes out, just like you do in their other street closures right now.
Here, if you got something, you got to go up there to whisper in Rita's ear and. Okay.
In that part of the process, are we contacted and then we're in charge of notifying the residents? How does that part work?
So we would typically send out a general notification and then any reach-out you do is just beneficial.
Okay.
Especially if you want to incorporate Carly's or anyone else.
Let me see if there's anybody online that has a question. Yeah, I'm not seeing any hands, so council, do we, I don't know if we need to take a vote, we can just say we support. Okay, everybody good?
Yep.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So we'll go through council reports. What's to start?
I can start. Side from Summit Avenue, joined the mayor and council member Bartram at MML last night to meet and confer with members of the county council, which I think was, it's always good to keep up friendly relations. The other two big from the north side are, thank you to town staff, the stop signs, the speed motivated stop signs have been put in in a couple of locations, one namely at St. Paul and Plyers Mill, where we've had some issues, and I was out walking the dog last night and they work very, very well. So they catch cars in plenty of time to give them notice and people take notice, and I've come to complete stops, so those are working effectively. And then most excitedly is that the rapid flashing beacon bases, at least one of them, seems to be installed, and so.
Wheatley.
Yes, there is progress after, I don't know, seven years? So.
You're hearing history, everybody.
I won't put a period on that sentence until I see them operating, but they are.
Till they're flashing.
And so for those, we've been working with State Highway Administration for seven years to get pedestrian-activated rapid flashing beacons at Wheatley Street, where there's some really poor line of sight issues for pedestrians crossing Metropolitan, which is a state road. Those pedestrians predominantly are headed to Mark and other places for public transportation or to the farmer's market. And especially at this time of year, when the time is changing around daylight savings, as early as like 4:35, it gets really hard to see people when they're coming off the Mark train. There's been several near misses, and so it's been a slow process, but a huge thank you to Matt, and then Nate took it over, and now it looks like it may be happening. So that's all I've got.
Okay, good.
Darren's done a fair share of lobbying too for SJA, so. I'll let you do the MTC, is that okay?
Yeah.
All right, so just two updates. One is for pedestrian bicycling and access and safety working group. Just to flag that we met on February 28th, and all of the notes from that meeting are on the town website. Next meeting for that group will be in April. And then for the Sustainable Kensington, we met on March 6th and discussed the various activity areas. I think one thing that we want to flag, you know, progress is being made along all of them, but one thing that Anne and I received finally, started in the summer, was solar feasibility study and resilience hub feasibility study for the Town Hall to be basically a resilience hub. If there were emergency, some sort of natural disaster, this room was studied for being a place where people could come in, charge batteries, you know, we would be able to have a backups battery on the outside of the Town Hall, but that would be fed by solar, so they were studying all of this with the potential of having solar panels put on the roof. Long story short, the resilience hub, we wouldn't generate enough electricity from our solar to be able to make that work from a financial perspective and from also just the amount of solar electricity generated. And the weather would work on Town Hall, on the top here on our roof, will depend on whether we can get them put on the main part, the kind of arced part of the roof, and not just the flat part that's over the offices.
You know, I didn't realize it, but there is a flat part over the stage. Doesn't seem to be much up there.
Yeah, they, so they did.
Did they look at that too?
They looked at everywhere, and so, so it's going to take more conversations, and at some point, we'll come back to the council and just present more of the details of what the, you know, what the timelines would be, what the feasibility is, but we have to talk with, we have to talk with, they said to actually talk with Maryland Historic Trust, Historic Preservation Commission, and we'll also want to meet first with our Kensington Historic Society about whether that's feasible to do on a historic building like this, so. We're also in the conversation with the people from the Green Bank. The Green Bank, the Montgomery County Green Bank, funded this feasibility study generously and has connected us to various technical experts. So one thing that we're exploring is how we, how we kind of build a solar movement in the town with working with some of the commercial buildings and other property owners and things around community solar. So we're exploring that through Sustainable Kensington, and we'll continue to report back to everybody.
Great.
Do you have anything else to add on that, Anne?
Not on solar.
Okay.
No, also the only other thing I would say in terms of activity areas is we do have a group that is forming around looking at stormwater management from property owner perspective versus town infrastructure perspective, so more to come on that.
Okay. All right, um, yeah, do you want to?
Sure, I'll share a couple of updates. The Greenscape Committee met last week, and we have a very busy spring and fall planned. We are working on several programs to continue to enhance and preserve tree canopy. So with Matt and Alex's assistance, we're looking at exploring some new ways to promote private residents putting trees on their property. And we'll be sharing information on that. We're going to have another Tree Care 101 workshop on May 18th. We did this last year, and we had a good turnout, just to teach residents about how to take care of trees. We are putting in plans for a native plant sale, which looks like it'll be on May 19th. And then we're moving forward with the idea of establishing some new pollinator-friendly gardens and visible areas in town and commercial areas, so we're looking, we're in conversation with Prevention of Blindness, Look Again Resale Shop, and then the Compass Atelier, the new art space. So this could be a new opportunity that we'll work on, starting now, planning for fall installation, so more to come on that. I did also want to share that the third annual Juneteenth for Kensington will be Saturday, June 15th. Planning is underway. There's the rain date of June 16th. This will be at St. Paul Park again. It's proven to be a very wonderful community event. I think this year will be the same, so if you want to get involved, reach out to me or Jamie Boston, who's chairing that effort. And then the final thing I wanted to just pass along, those of us who have kids and the Walter Johnson Cluster may have heard, and I don't know if this came up in last night's meeting with.
We may.
We did.
I wanted to just highlight for the community that there is concern that ICPS may cut $20 million from the planned budget for Woodward High School construction, just to hold back on constructing the auditorium initially for class savings, and this could have obviously a detrimental effect, not just for students in our area who may end up going to that school, but also the Northwood students who are going to be in that opening school, since the school is intended to be a performing arts space. So I think it would be good for the town to weigh in on this. Their meeting, Education Committee's meeting tomorrow to go through the proposed cuts, and wanted to bring it up here.
We know, I was on a call with the president of the school board, and there were a lot of questions about that, and basically she said the county's got to figure out how to generate more money. I mean, that's the bottom line, that, you know, it's like $80 million for the auditorium? Something. Yeah.
They're trying to cut 20 million, is what I understand, from that and another project.
Okay, but they're just, there's not enough money. I mean, there's not enough money for police officers, because you're going to have to pay them more. I mean, it's just.
Right.
You know, she doesn't know what to do. I mean, in the sense of the county, the county government's got to figure out how to generate more money. I mean, they raised property tax last year. They're not going to do that again, you know, this year, but.
So was this a topic of discussion in last night?
Not about taxes.
Not taxes, but as it happened, we, before the meeting started, had an opportunity to talk with council member Jawando, who's the Chair of Education, and so the three of us brought it up. First of all, to say a big kudos to our cluster PTA reps, and I will speak for the KP PTA Chair, because the emails went out and made the community aware of this. So going into the meeting, there, I think, three or four emails had hit my inbox. So when council member Jawando came over to say hi and chat a little bit, we took the opportunity to expressly talk about this specific issue, and he is well-versed, understands, to the mayor's point, he's trying to figure out where the money comes from for all of this. And his point too is not only do they need more money, the school budget is a very complex budget, especially with CIP projects taking multiple years, that the true cost of these projects changes from when they approve them to when they build them, and that is the scenario that they're in with both schools.
Yeah, the Crown.
Crowns Phase 1 and Woodward's Phase 2, that they are just, you know, the estimates that the MCPS gave them when they began and what they approved, just aren't, they don't meet everything, so they're, his words are trying to do the best that they can. I don't think, you know, there's no indication which way the conversation might go tomorrow, but if anything, he heard us, that, you know, the town is very, very much engaged in this issue.
Okay. That's all. Thank you. Darren?
So I'll just quickly report, we had a Mobility and Traffic Committee meeting on February 21st. Talked about the Connecticut Avenue improvements that are being developed by the state highway, which I guess are 30% phase, which seemed promising, as far as, you know, getting to the next phase. We'll take up the speed hump later in the meeting with the resolution. Talked about flash and stop signs that we're deploying throughout town, looking for suggestions on where they can be most effectively deployed. Continued a discussion that Nate began with about this painting our roadways in the effort of traffic calming, technical urbanism. Couple outstanding issues obviously remain that we're still waiting for state highway to formally approve signs on university, so that we can finally put up.
Well, I think they did, they did approve it.
Oh, today?
Yeah. Yeah, sorry.
He told me. It was approved today. They should have them up by the end of spring.
Then I'd like to announce that the signs.
Now, this is SJA, they didn't say spring.
Yeah, seven years.
This is not SJA, this is SJA.
I'll say they held their promise on the rapid flashing beacon, the most recent.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it was supposed to be by 2023. Yeah.
Well, that's great. And then the last thing I think we're sort of waiting on are the speed back signs for Metropolitan.
We have it, we have it.
We have it, it's probably next week, it's probably going out. No one tells me, so, yeah, okay.
Good thing you come to meeting.
You know, things are just flying fast and furious, sometimes just really.
I'm not used to state highway moving so fast.
I know, I know, but it'll be nice to get that big board off the table upstairs.
All right, well, now I'm done.
Great, okay, well, I'll just add a couple of things. I've been working with the KHS. We're doing two history boards for the, for the train station, one for the train station and one for the BNO Railroad, and hopefully we'll get those installed this year, so we're just this close to getting it approved, and then we can send it off to the vendor. It's similar to what we have in Clum Kennedy. It's a history board of tell you what you are, where you are, what, why it's important, and give you the history of behind it. We have one at Warner, which the parks, excuse me, paid for, and then we have one at Clum Kennedy. We'll have them at the train station, and then the next place, we'll do one here, this building, then we'll have to think about. But I think people really enjoy seeing, you know, a little history behind of these buildings and things, so. And hopefully they want to learn more, so. We also just want to remind everybody that we have the 130th anniversary celebration here at Town Hall on the April 6th. Tickets right now are only be sold to town residents, but as of Monday, they'll go out to, further to anyone who would like to buy tickets, they'll be available, so. Residents had the first chance, and then we'll open it up to the rest of the Kensington community and the business community as well. We have the Compass Arts Center, I believe their grand opening is April 13th. I think they're already doing classes. They'll, after April 1st, and so that's very exciting. And then we also have the Day of the Book, so on April 21st. I did, we had the Warner Circle meeting on Monday. Anne was there. We had over 100 people in the building and 50 more online. It was a good presentation, very few questions, which was great. That means everybody understands what's going on and they're happy about it. Mr. Warner's great-great-grandson was here.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so Kate DeWitt, who's president of the Historic Society, got a chance to talk to him, and they helped set up a meeting time where he can come in and maybe share some items that we can put on display at some point, and maybe some, a permanent display at the house. Once the house is completed, they'll have a area, a museum-type area, they'll be able to. So that's, that's really exciting.
And that recording is going to be available online.
Yes, yes. Is Albert still online? Albert, are you there? You may have stepped away. I think they'll have that up probably in the next week. It'll probably go out on their e-blast.
Yeah, I'll check with Melissa.
Yeah, see when that'll be going up, but yeah, it was a good meeting. Does anybody have any questions about any of the reports that we just gave? I'm not seeing anything, so we will move on to the town manager. Do you have anything?
Mayor, the only comment I have is I'm actually going to request that we remove Resolution Number R-10-2024 this evening as regards to the budget amendment.
Okay.
Town Attorney Ferguson wants to clarify a few questions with me. So we'll bring this back in April.
Okay.
It's not, it's not a time issue for me, so.
Okay.
If we can just remove that from the agenda.
Okay, that was more the request of the.
Just to clarify a few questions from the Town Attorney Ferguson.
Okay, cool. All righty. All right, so, anything else? Susan, anything? No, Alex, you're good? Okay, so we'll move on to public appearances, to see opportunities to speak on any topic or subject that is not on tonight's agenda. Well, I did, only because my, my goal here is to have it on before 8 o'clock.
That's great.
But we had a lot of ordinances and things like that, so I, I moved it, but it could be at the end again next month, depending on where we are, so, yeah. Joe has it handed, so go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we, it would be great to have it at the outset of the meeting, as council member Ingle had suggested a couple of meetings ago. I'm wondering.
He's mayor, he can do it any way he wants.
For the record, I don't think I suggested to make it the first thing. I said, moving it up, and I suggested. The place it's at right now, I think, works. That's my opinion.
According to this clock, it's only 6:30, so it's really early in the.
So be that as it may. Be that as it may, I'm wondering if it looks like we're gonna have a contested election in Kensington this year and uh. I guess I would expect that the um incumbents who are facing reelection would probably be in a position to know if they're going to be facing opposition.
No one has uh declared other than the three people that are sitting here right now.
Sorry to disappoint for now.
So it does not look like a contested election, at least at this uh, at this remove, less than three months before the voting.
There's quite a bit of time, Joe. So, no, no one has signed up, but uh, have you actually declared?
Yep.
You have it filed, okay, so only two of us have filed, so uh, but Anne intends to file.
Right, right, uh, I heard her mention that last meeting. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, uh, anybody else? The audience, see anybody? No other hands? Okay, we'll move on to ordinance resolutions and regulations. Matt?
Uh, Mayor Council, uh, before you, this evening is a public hearing for ordinance number O dash zero one dash twenty twenty-four. It's a public hearing for an ordinance of the Mayor and County Council of Kensington authorizing the acquisition of certain property located at one oh five two eight. St. Paul Street located in Kensington, Maryland, for public purpose. Uh, this property was identified uh by the town, uh, a number of years ago, has a potential location for future public works. Uh, site, um, we have been working with, uh, along with um. Attorney Michelle Rosenfeld, who is here with us this evening, uh, with the property owner, Miss Warner. Uh, we conducted an appraisal in January of twenty twenty-three, uh, for an appraisal value of nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, Ms. Rosenfeld received a counter offer from Ms. Warner's uh legal counsel, uh, for one million ten thousand dollars. Um. We uh have a draft contract agreement uh available in the public documents, uh, it was drafted by Connor Turner Ferguson. Uh, and we have, we opened the public hearing.
Okay. Right, um, did we have anybody sign up or we're just asking?
We're just asking.
Okay, okay. Um, I'm gonna start with people in the audience, does anybody wanna, if you wanna speak to that, you need to go to the. Podium and give your name and your, just your street.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Alkar, I live on West Washington Street and I wanted to. Uh, express my support for the town acquiring ten five two eight. St. Paul Street. Uh, and also, yes, on five, ten five two eight, and I would also say yes. On ten five two six, so that is the former Mulharen property that was acquired by Pepco. In twenty twelve, so as you may recall. In twenty eleven, there was uh Snowmageddon and the big explosion of the Pepco Building. Uh, that was under repair for many, many months. Uh, so, about a year after that, Pepco acquired. Ten five two four and ten five two six. Uh, so ten five two six is uh vacant, Pepco's been telling the regulators for. Since then that it was, you know, reserved for future use. First, it was gonna be reserved for. Uh, the end of twenty twenty-three and then. When twenty twenty-three was approaching, they, they changed that to like twenty thirty, uh, but. They're, they're not using it, um, and uh. You know, conditions have changed since then, so. Uh, it's, it's pretty rare that uh, you know, a property comes up that's adjacent to. A park, uh, which I think would make both of those. Uh, smart acquisitions, and I, I have a feeling there's a grander plan here, that's, you know, not really part of this hearing tonight, uh, so. I'm in support of that, I would uh. Also just express opposition to the idea of, of the Public Works Garage. Uh, on those sites, just because it's a residential neighborhood. It is um. Next to a park, um, if I lived on that street, I don't know that I would want to have the, you know, you know, the noise and disruption of. Of uh, Public Works there, thank you.
Can you say trucks, I mean, right now, the trucks are pickup trucks, not, no different than what's currently being used at Surf Pro. So I just. More clarify, they're not, you know. Eighteen-wheelers.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Name and street.
Uh, so my name is Doug Smith, I live on St. Paul Street. Um, and uh, I honestly came to this meeting because I didn't know what the hell was going on, so I got a little postcard saying. The town was maybe gonna buy this property. So I'm here mostly to be educated. Um, so I don't, I don't really know whether the, and I don't know whether the plan is for this meeting to. Present any information about what the plan is, uh, I mean, I know the property, but I don't really know what the town is planning to do with it.
Well, because the Summit Avenue extension will actually go right through our current Public Works building, we have to replace it. There aren't a lot of. Open lots or availability of property. Particularly in an area, because that area is zoned for, you know, commercial, even though it's across the street from residential. So um, uh, we found that piece of property. And made an offer on it, because that's where we want to move our Public Works facility to that property.
Okay, and keep the building that's there?
Uh, no, we would probably replace the building and our, because it's so difficult to do any um. Solar and things like that here, we want to. Do a new building that will provide, um, I'll let Nate speak to more of that, but uh, you know, something that's more um sustainable. You will? Is that the right term you would use?
Yeah, I think just designed with.
Design-wise, so no, the, the, the current building would eventually go away. But that's, you know, we have to. Get uh probably put in for a state bond to, to do that.
Okay. So I, I, I don't want to take up the council's time educating me, I'm happy to get educated offline. Um, I guess. I guess I'd raise two principles, one is. It's on a residential street.
Right.
Um, it's not only a residential street, it's a, a street of historic properties and. Uh. You know, I, I consider myself a reasonable historic property owner, but I think. There are lots of. Streets of historic properties, where if you propose to put the town Public Works. Uh, on that street, you'd have people jumping up and down and saying what a terrible idea that was. Um. I don't think it's necessarily a terrible idea, I mean, we've had these other sort of weird uses on the property, uh, on the street for a while. Um. And the other thing is, obviously, that it's next to the park, so. Um. I guess I just asked that the council, as you're thinking through what to really do with the property and maybe to Al's point, if there's. Interest in the adjacent properties which are getting even less productive use at this point. Um, to just think about the residents on the street and the historic character and its proximity to a park.
Yeah, I mean, I think the great challenge is, is taking those, um, especially if we got the second lot uh of Pepco's, is the design. And that's where the, the community, particularly on St. Paul Street, will have a real input on how that. You know, that looks, because all those other things could be behind a building, a facade, that doesn't look like a Public Works building.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of ways of doing it, and that's, to me, very exciting, would be designing a sustainable building, but. Fits in more with the community. And then it also could provide, uh, we're looking to add bathrooms for St. Paul Park. Um, that could be open either during events or people have codes that they're able to get into a bathroom, um, because I know that's. Been brought to our attention quite a bit, that there are no bathrooms, you know, at St. Paul Park. So, you know, there's a way of doing that as well, so um, so it's actually, so I would say. I think the part where we'd like to get the residents involved is when we start designing it. But it's a commercial property, so, you know, if we didn't take it, what you're looking at today will remain there. For a very long time, so I think this is an opportunity to see great improvement on the property.
Yep, so in that vein.
You're leaving the mic.
Uh, in, in that vein, I guess I, i- it seems to me it makes a lot of sense to think about the three lots and not the one lot. Um, to the extent, you know, that obviously has money implications and. I don't know if you need as much space as three lots would give you, but.
Well, definitely two, but you know, I think um. As I said, we could think about that, but I, I just think the design portion is where the excitement will come in for everyone to. Um, make a much nicer look, you know, you probably get rid of. You know, the amount of fencing that's there and then just have maybe one entrance in and then all the things are behind it, not in front of it. Which is what's happening right now. If you, if you like green vehicles, you get to see plenty of those over the weekend, so.
So, to both of those, Doug, come knock on my door anytime, happy to talk to you about it. Um, as well as to Al's comment, is another resident of St. Paul Street. I know I have been advocating for it for a couple of reasons, and the mayor alluded to one of them, one is. And I love our local businesses, but, you know, the trucks coming out. Right now from Surf Pro, our day and night, they run twenty-four hours of business when they have emergencies. They also have enormous dumpsters. Uh, right by your house that they dump at least once a week, that contain some, you know. Waste from uh remediation of properties, um. Public Works would have another use, our trucks would be there. But it would also diminish us either having to truck over the mowing equipment or the crew. Riding the mowing equipment over from its current location to the park, which this is the. Biggest area that we mow, um. But the biggest driver has been, in a, getting hold of it allows us to build a, a building, Doug, to your point. That fits in with the community. Um, it puts our Public Works centralized in our town, which I think is better than where it's located now. But it gives us the opportunity to plan a building that also benefits the park, so the, the mayor alluded to. Design-wise, having so that there's accessibility to bathrooms for our events, um. For those people who are, you know, the park is hugely popular right now, it's the pavilion for birthdays and other uh outdoor events. But it also would have provided us the ability to also plan like a um, a community room. So there would be an indoor and outdoor, you know, party room, birthdays and gatherings and things like that. Again, to the mayor's point, it's all about design, that will be a whole nother discussion, but the opportunity to get a hold of that first lot. Um, arose. Coincidentally, at a time where we have to relocate Public Works as it is. And this, as a, you know, I know the mayor came to me and I said, as a resident of the street, I actually think. It's a perfect location. To your point. You know, I think some people have an idea like, oh, Public Works is just a big. You know, industrial garage with big trucks and we would design something that is in fitting with it being on a residential street.
So, rebuttal.
I guess the other point I would make, which maybe everybody appreciates, is that. St. Paul Park, even though it's on the north side, the northeast quadrant, whatever, um, gets a lot of use and it's, it's a huge. Resource and it's sort of a. It's not the kind of resource that we have in other parts of the town, so, um, I, I think doing well by the park is. And its users is a good role.
And you'll be the first one that gets plowed in the world. That's another benefit, that's why Connor really.
I mean. I do leave early.
We do not get that much.
You want it because you don't want people using your bathroom anymore.
So I was gonna make the comment to Doug that you used to be the bathroom house, right, when your kids were there, and then it got shifted down to me. Um. And I'm looking for more permanent solution.
And I would say, it, just so people know, we're not just, not just looking to sit on this, um, the existing. Public Works building. Needs. A lot of work.
It's in very bad shape.
We have to decide. Do we put? The dollars into improving that, knowing its future is limited. Or do we, you know, and put it somewhere else where everything would be new, and, and, and then. We also want to remember that we get requests from residents, I think there's a good request, for example, to. Um. Shift from Broad Salt to something like Bryant. And we don't have that facility at our current location.
We don't have the space.
We don't have the space, and so, again, this, we're not designing the building tonight, but um, you know. Part of the design will be taken into account previous requests. And the merits, and see if we have the space to. Add those to sort of a, a, a new site.
Um, so anybody on the uh, on the Zoom have a question? I don't see any hands right now, although I did see somebody briefly up. Uh, Miriam?
Hi, thank you, my name's Miriam Cross, I'm a resident on St. Paul Street as well. I just wanted to support um, all the points that the two um, public speakers uh made there, um, you know, we are a little concerned about um. Public Works and what that means for our street, but it does sound like you guys, you know, are being very careful and thinking through how it impacts. Our street, um, and hopefully it'll be improvement, but just wanted to support all of the concerns that were raised.
Great, well, we will, we're, we're a long way off, I would say, but um, before we start designing. Uh, but that will definitely be something that we would want to engage, um, particularly to the residents that are on St. Paul Street. Um, to, to be engaged with that. So once that, you know, gets up and running, then we will definitely, you know, reach out to everyone and um, make sure that you're aware of. You know, and we'll welcome all comments from all residents, but particularly from the, the people that are on the street.
Sounds great, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, anyone else? Okay, I'm not seeing. Any other hands, okay? Oh, Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, I was wondering if you'd just refresh our memories about how much this is going to cost, this acquisition.
Uh, Matt already said, but we'll say it again, it was one million ten thousand dollars.
That, that was the counterproposal from the property, I guess.
I didn't hear Matt uh, very clearly.
One million ten thousand dollars.
Okay, thanks for refreshing our memory.
Alright.
Do we need to make an amendment?
So not, not quite yet, um, so the staff is asking the, the council, uh, keep the public record open until uh, Monday, April. Eight.
Okay.
Four P M. Um, at which point we'll close the public record, provide any additional written or verbal comments to the council. For consideration at the April tenth council meeting. At which point we would make an amendment with the new counterproposal offer from Ms. Warner's. Property.
Sounds like we can, somebody wants to make a motion?
Sure, I'll move that we. Keep the record open uh for public hearing until four P M on Monday. April eighth, twenty twenty-four on ordinance O dash zero one dash twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Right, those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. Michelle, thank you so much, I'm sorry you weren't needed, but thank you for being here.
I'm glad I wasn't deep. Thank you.
Bye, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move down to um. Number two.
Thank you, Council, uh, before you this evening is the introduction of ordinance number O dash zero two dash twenty twenty-four. An introduction of an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the Town of Kensington to appropriate and adopt at this year. Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, F Y twenty-five budget, until levy a tax on certain real and personal property under the provisions. Article six dash two or three of the tax property article of the Annotated Code of Maryland as amended. Uh, staff is requesting that the public hearing be set for Wednesday, eight, April tenth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M.
Okay, um, does anybody have any uh questions regarding um, number two?
So no comments this evening?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we're just introducing, I'm sorry. Uh, so I just need a um, motion.
There's no, we're not proposing any tax increases.
Okay.
Um. And then uh, the detailed budget is available online and through the uh email notification system.
Okay. Alright, need a motion? Set the hearing?
Sure, I'll move that we set the public hearing. For ordinance O dash zero two dash twenty twenty-four, the introduction of the town's budget for Wednesday, April tenth. Twenty twenty-four at seven P M.
Okay. Okay, is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you, number three?
Thank you, Council, uh, before you save this resolution number R dash G O three dash twenty twenty-four. A resolution of the Mayor and Council of the Town of Kensington authorized a contract agreement with Brutus and Associates. Uh, to provide engineering and support services for storm drain study along with thirty-five hundred and thirty-six hundred blocks of Farragut Avenue. Uh, this was previously on the agenda last month, uh, we had to postpone it to this month, uh, to allow Brutus a little more time on the engineering. Um. This is a project that we've been working on for a number of years, uh, we're trying to run a storm drain. Lateral between St. Paul and Lexington Street. Uh, the engineers and, and, the engineering is necessary uh, to determine uh. The water distribution from a number of properties, we also ran into a problem, uh, there's a W G L. Main line running down the center of the street, which will need to be shifted. Um, a little bit to get a storm drain in. Um. Brutus and Associates has been working with us on the St. Paul Storm Drain Project. Uh, they are also the engineer on contract for our bridge repair renovation project, so we have a pretty good working relationship with them.
And we feel comfortable that the, the gas line is where it actually is.
We are, uh, our contractor did test pits, that's how we know that it's off and. Most of the gas lines on the north side of the sidewalk, which doesn't affect the project. Between uh, a number of houses kind of in the middle of the block, the storm drain is in. Between uh a number of houses kind of in the middle of the block, the storm drain is in the middle of the street. Uh, we're working with W G L um to shift that back up to the sidewalk. Uh, so we need engineering to that and then obviously um. This is a little different than just adding a a storm drain. This is an entire lateral. That would uh covers quite a bit of water. Uh, as Councilmember Bartram knows, a number of his resident neighbors. Experience a good amount of water flooding and pounding during so.
Especially in their backyards, isn't it?
Both.
Yeah, okay. And um, W G L do the gas work.
It will do the gas work, yeah.
Okay, good. Um, so any questions from the council?
Had uh just a. Question and a comment. I think the comment is it looks like. That they were again um assessing for a ten-year flood situation and I know that Nate had raised that last time.
So I didn't have to.
And I just wanted to note.
We need a twenty-year.
We need it.
So uh, a room who's our hydro engineer, uh, he's aware that request from the council, not only on this project or the same.
That'll be, okay. And then the question I have is more. Uh, forward-looking, knowing that we have our ARPA dollars to allocate towards a much bigger stormwater. Um, project. I understand these smaller assessments, um approving them without. You know, doing a. Competition makes sense because of where we are and and the phase, but for the bigger project, I just wanted to. Raise, it feels like we're gonna have, and I'm sure you're already thinking of this, more planning. Around the procurement process for that.
Well, okay, so the St. Paul and Farragut project, they fall within our scope of of work right now.
Right.
So everything's already been bid out.
Right.
Accepted. This, what will we end up doing further down the line, mainly Kansas County Park? Uh, we've come to the realization pretty quickly with working with Brutus and Associates, it is outside our our ability. Uh, we are need need, we're gonna need to bring in the state. The county. And parks.
Yeah.
To figure out a solution to that project. Uh, so the ARPA funds. While there will be some base engineering put towards that, the solution's gonna have to come from all of us. Um, the state's gonna have to really help us with that. A lot of the problem is coming from them, from Connecticut Avenue. Um, obviously, we need parks cooperation. They've not been as helpful as we hoped thus far. Um, so obviously we need some politicking at some point. Um, but you know, we'll get there after the project.
So let's be clear too, the state is in, has several storm drains on Armory Avenue.
Correct. So we have a shared network on what we refer to as the C-line storm drain network. Um, it is shared with the State Highway Administration on this Armory Avenue, Baltimore and Connecticut. And a lot of the problems we're having is the volume of water coming off Connecticut Avenue going into a system that wasn't necessarily built for a six lane road. Um, they're aware of some of the issues um and and we're gonna need their help finding solutions.
So when they put in um Connecticut Avenue, which was before all of our times. Um, they didn't, they just plugged into our storm drains. Okay. And did they prove, I know it's a little off topic, sorry, that they at the Cohen's house, they're doing that work, is that correct?
So that's where I'm doing is actually an easement with the state. So it's not, it's not ours.
Okay.
They, we are doing the engineering. On the pipe from that property down the Calvert.
Okay.
Um, and then we'll get a recommendation list from Brutus on repairs. We would be responsible for the repairs of the piping, but if there's anything on the actual inlet, that would fall under the jurisdiction of state highway.
Okay. Right. Does anybody in the audience have any questions? On number three? Uh, Joe?
Yes, um, Matt is uh Brutus being spread a bit too thin with all the work that the town is giving it. Uh, I ask because. The bridge projects on the uh south side of town have uh, I haven't seen any work been done on this and and uh. At all. And I know they're the. A league contractor or the league contractor on that project and uh.
So there there are separate divisions within Brutus, a very large engineering firm. Um. These projects that we're talking about this evening are the hydro division, the bridge is structural. So they're not the same divisions. We're not dealing with the same project managers. Uh, delay on the bridge project is mainly due because the project manager left. Uh, they had to hire a new employee, he had to catch up. Um, and there's also been a request from parks to do a. A uh changes we've discussed in previous council meetings about moving. The access point for Kensington Park from the mid-block crossing up to uh Frederick's, so. Uh, that's mostly been the delay. So just finding a new project manager. He needs to. Basically go back and read everything to figure out what he was doing. Um, but I hope to have an R P L will be late summer from them.
Okay.
So late summer for the uh. Request for a proposal, is that what you're saying?
For the bridge, yeah, for the construction, for a construction contractor.
So if everything goes smoothly, we'd be seeing that bridge project being done by the end of the year, early next year?
Uh, start. Most likely, not not completion.
I'm sorry, start when was that?
Best case scenario, they might start one of the bridges by the end of the year. Uh, that not, none of the bridges would be completed by the end of the calendar year.
Okay. Alrighty, thanks.
I don't see any other hands. Counselor, you guys good? Somebody wants to make a hearing? Want to make a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve resolution number R dash zero three dash twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, you got super majority there.
Thank you, Council.
All right, number four?
Uh, resolution number R dash zero six dash twenty twenty-four for the resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington to authorize a town manager. To extend the auditing auditing contract with Linton Schaefer, Warfield and Garrett. Public uh, public certified accountants to perform the annual audit for fiscal years twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, F Y. Twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six. So this is essentially a one-year contract with two one-year options, two additional one-year options. We. Did send the audit over to the auditing committee and we did receive a comment back from the chair, uh Jeff Capron, who is.
Who's on the call?
Thank you.
Uh, so Mr. Capron would like to comment, I would defer to him, otherwise I would refer to Councilmember Lifter and. Um, Engel as the auditing co-chairs.
This is, this is Jeff Capron, if you can hear me. I uh. I I I wrote back, I I thought the proposal was. Was good. We've had a good experience with this firm. Uh, they're they're skilled in the particular kind of accounting principles that apply to local governments and. Their pricing is. In the with, you know, in the frame of reference with which I'm familiar. Quite reasonable. And so I thought. Uh, renewing their contract and particularly. Uh, get giving them a commitment or giving us the opportunity for three years is a good idea. And the fee increases in each of those years are reasonable, so. I was happy to see that they made that proposal and I supported.
Thank you.
They don't know what Jeff said. Uh, they've been very good to work with and responsive and this is a, I think a reasonable proposal.
Okay.
Yeah, and and Eva did mention to us that they would change the principles over the years, just to make sure there's separate. Different eyes looking at the the final audits.
Okay, okay. Any questions from the audience? Okay, no scene again. So we will uh, I'll accept a motion.
I move that we adopt resolution number R dash zero six dash twenty twenty-four. Authorizing us, the town, to extend the auditing contract with Linton Schaefer, Warfield and Garrett.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council.
Number five?
Uh, resolution number R dash zero seven dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution of the Kensington Town Council confirming appointments made by the. Mayor to the Development Review Board. Uh, we had three individuals on the D R V uh that all required about staying on. Thank you. Um, Mike Henahan uh would serve as professional, uh Andrew Roud would serve as professional and Michael Gordon would serve uh as a resident. These are all. Reappointments to the D R V.
Okay, nothing, uh, maybe thing about reappointments, uh, you know, we haven't had a lot going on as far as the D R B. I don't.
This year, no.
This year has been pretty quiet, so I know a a couple of these people haven't even had really a chance to to uh have a meeting, which.
Right.
So uh, we wanna, you know, give people that opportunity if so, I mean. I don't know if it's good news that we haven't had meetings, but um.
It's the nature of how it's been. I will say we are also very fortunate that we have a number of residents who. Are also in the professional field and are have been um wonderful about sharing their time and their expertise with us. And the fact that they are willing to renew is wonderful because. We don't, you know, the hope is that there will be redevelopment down the road with certain areas of town and. And you know, it's very helpful to the D R B to have this kind of expertise.
I agree. Uh, council, any questions?
We need the third where I asked clause, but I think it's a. Carryover from last year possibly.
On the.
True.
Delete that as amended? Okay. Right, you wanna, uh, anybody have any questions regarding the appointments?
No, just thanks to them for agreeing to do it.
I don't see anybody. All right, uh, need a motion?
Sure, I move that we adopt resolution R dash zero seven dash twenty twenty-four. A resolution confirming appointments by the mayor to the Development Review Board as amended.
Okay. I was your second?
My second.
All those in favor? Okay, number six?
Thank you, Council. Um. For you this evening is resolution number R dash here eight dash twenty twenty-four. A resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington authorizing the town manager to contract for the installation of a speed home. On the ten-six-hundred block of St. Paul Street. Um, the town staff received a uh request. From a couple of residents on the ten-six-hundred block. Um, per our policy, we put out a a petition. Uh, the petition went to twelve residents on the block. They all were in favor of the proposed speed home. Uh, they met with the Mobility and Traffic Committee last month, M T C. And the M T C provided a favorable recommendation for the installation of the speed home.
Are they all on the same page of the location of the speed?
They are.
That's very important.
We were very specific of where it would go. There's not a lot of room on this block.
Okay.
Uh, it's going mid-block. It is going, uh, we told both residents exactly where it's going. And we received uh, one of the. Received feedback from both.
Okay.
They were in favor.
Okay, good. I don't wanna. Guys showing up to put in the speed hump to.
Yeah, so it literally, the street is about four hundred and fifty feet in length.
Okay.
Um, it's mid-block is is two twenty-five. So uh, Joe Kuchar, our traffic engineer, sketched it out, so they know exactly where it's going.
Okay.
Fun fact.
Yeah.
The maximum speed recorded during a traffic study. Sixty-six mile per hour.
Yeah.
Error, but I mean.
Sixty-six seems like an error.
Wow, or you just had some kid that. You know, took a. Picture that. Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I will. I can picture it. I hate to say.
Yeah.
I mean, need a couple. Late at night, they'll skip stop signs.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, uh, any questions regarding number seven? Don't see any hands? Okay, um, call a motion?
I'll move to um.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's number six, sorry.
Uh, was it six?
It's resolution R O eight.
I moved to approve resolution number R dash O eight dash twenty twenty-four.
Okay, is there a second?
My second.
Well, all those in favor? Okay.
Thank you, Council. We'll we'll try to have that installed this spring. Um, but we told the residents it might be the summer depending on, we need a pave team to do it, so.
Yeah, cuz you gotta, you gotta really follow up with the pavers.
We have some concrete work coming this spring, but it's a different team, so we'll we'll see if we can. We'll see if we can get it in before the summer.
Okay.
Uh, resolution number R dash zero nine dash twenty twenty-four, the resolution of the town. Of the Kensington Council confirming appointments made by the mayor to the Board of Supervisors of Elections. Council, these are a reappointments essentially of current uh board supervisors, uh Board of Elections, Kate DeWitt. Uh, Spencer Harrell and Robin Watson, they've all um asked to remain.
Susan Spencer contacted you. Okay, as I I saw him this morning.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. Um, council, any questions about? The people being appointed? Anyone on the uh, audience have any questions? I don't see any hands. Um. We have a motion.
So I'll move that we adopt resolution number R dash zero nine dash twenty twenty-four. Resolution confirming appointments made by the mayor to the Board of Supervisors of Elections.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. I know. I'm glad we pulled number eight. Right, um, just wanna um, before we adjourn, uh, wanna make sure we are going to be in person on the tenth. I'm sure everybody knows that. Um, we talked uh about having a C I P um meeting um. On the third, I'm not sure that's gonna work out um. And we wanted to get, I wanted to get some other thoughts on how we could do that, whether we start our uh meeting on the tenth, inviting people to come in earlier.
Turned into more of like a listening session?
Yeah, or just a, not just a listening session, but question. Q and A.
Okay, I will, I just mentioned to Tracy before the meeting started, I will be in Chicago that day.
Yeah.
I will need to be joining virtually.
Is it just for the day or?
I'm there, uh, the tenth through the twelfth.
Okay, um. I mean, I feel like we're all um available for questions. Um, I know staff is always good at answering questions. Um, we could do um. We could do a Zoom Q and A, which quite honestly, we'd probably get a few more people just because people don't want to. To come out.
You hybrid and.
Just do a hybrid.
Are you even gonna be able to join?
She could join the meeting, 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 right, uh, on the tenth.
Yeah, it's seven.
Yeah, yeah. So you would, would it be six o'clock where you are?
Don't make any promises. You never know.
We'll have a forum.
In your vision, what would be, would postpone it to and just find a better, a later date? Or.
Town meeting?
The the C I P portion.
Oh.
And or just. Doing it at like a hybrid, like one hour before.
I mean, I just think it's a question of what what can be fit on calendar.
It is, it's becoming a challenge. I mean, everybody's, you know, got other obligations with children and work and.
Yeah, I mean, I think the original idea was to have, you know, be able to have more small group discussion plus a Q and A. That uses the budget as a basis to. To put some structure around the conversation, but go can go beyond that and helping people see. How we're prioritizing, so it'll be hard, I think, to do that on Zoom. I think if we do it on Zoom, it would end up being. Or at a forum like this, more of a traditional Q and A, which is important. We need that hearing process. Anyway, but it's different.
I mean, I think. It almost wants to be when you're building the budget, not necessarily when you've already put it into place. I don't know, does that make sense?
That was the original idea.
Right, and we just couldn't get it scheduled.
Worked into this more of a informing rather than shaping.
So um, I'm wondering if, you know, in our summary. That we can, that we'll send out tomorrow, is that encouraging people to reach out to the council members? Do they have any questions regarding the budget? Um, or reach out to staff? Or, you know, um, we do the, we do the thing um. At another time, I'm just trying to, you know, trying to fit that in, cuz there's not a lot of time, cuz you know, everybody's away next week. Well, I'm. I don't do a spring breaker. Um. Um, so. You know, that's, it's uh hard because you can come right back and. You're on top of it and um.
Well, I'm planning to meet tomorrow with um Matt and Susan just to get a walkthrough of the budget and I was gonna use that time to explore what's. Feasible. I know it's not ideal timing if we're meeting tonight.
Right.
That's how it worked out. Um, here we are.
I mean, just because we have great ideas, doesn't mean we can't postpone them to to. To like next year's budget. I mean, I just think it's um. I don't, I don't feel like I've had, I I think it's more curiosity, you know, regarding why are we buying property or what are we gonna do with this property? I don't feel the budget in general has been too many questions. Regarding that.
Yeah, I could see where not just the buying, but like. Okay, you bought it. What is, what's the longer term, like, when would the building come down? What would, how much input will we have? What would that look like?
And we're like S H A, we don't really.
One step at a time.
One step at a time.
Um. But then to other. Larger priorities for the town too, right around, you know, this building. You know, our continued roads. Infrastructure, you know, just things that I think we can pull it together as a. You know, our continued roads, infrastructure, you know, just things that I think we can pull it together as a.
Yeah.
Here are all the, the big i- items that are in our C I P and put it out to people, but I mean, we could still do that. Later and like may just inform people of what's in this year's budget or really work this fall. Towards one that would go toward next year's budget. Especially because we. There will be some real conversations also and engagement needed. When we see what happens at the county council level, as well as in the state budget with. Um, different grants and other things that we've applied for.
Right, and I, I mean, that actually would include in, you know, on this, um, Summit Avenue extension, whether they are able to keep that in the C I P.
Mm-hmm.
So, um. Yeah, so I think we can, um, provide something. I know, you know, previously we've had, you know, um, have coffee and. You know, with the, with the mayor and the council, you know, events, um, and give those opportunities to, um, but. Um, like, I. Skeptical that we'll get a big crowd, but, you know, we might get about ten fifteen people, which is good. I mean, those are the ones that are interested. But, you know, it's tough for people to get engaged. They've got, they're all going in a hundred different directions. So. So, so that we're not gonna do anything on the third. I don't think we can pull that together, so, um. Does it, does it make sense to do it after?
Yeah, I think something after, at least even just a debrief that. Scopes something for the fall, if Ann and I are.
Well, actually, the hearing stands open.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
The hearing's open until what, the Friday before our meeting? Actually, we're now Wednesday, so maybe.
Be the Monday in May.
So we'd have an opportunity before.
The maybe.
Yeah.
If we postpone it till later in April or early May.
Yeah. Okay, so you wanna try that?
Yeah, I figure we'll. See what's, see the ball with, with the calendar.
Yeah, it might give us a little more opportunity to maybe put together a sheet, you know, that we give out, something that we were talking about previously. Kind of some of the C I P programs and projects we're working on. So then, you know, the residents have a little better idea than just seeing numbers and line items, they actually see what we, what we're allocating. That we. For specific projects, you know.
We can, we can also get some early feedback for how we, whether it makes sense to do something bigger and more. Um, shaping it for the fall, for the following year.
Right.
I mean, that.
Uh, last time, May will give us, should hopefully give us what is happening with Summit Avenue in this county C I P. It will also give us. The firm expectation coming out of the state budget for grant for Saint Paul Park that we applied for. Um, for ADA improvements and and surface area, the.
The work, the, uh, the bicycling pedestrian priority area plan also, I mean.
So that's actually.
So that should be.
Yeah. Assuming that we, well, we get the grant, which I think we will.
I think we will, and then I foresee, talking to the town manager, we may need to do a little bit of work with our district eighteen partners. On talking to the state about when it comes to ADA.
They have to have some flexibility. Yeah. So that, that makes no sense at all, would they? You understand, they won't let you change the mulch out for.
Because the mulch came under a different grant.
Yeah, I mean.
So. We have. We have a district eighteen ready to engage.
Um. So I pulled up the planning document and just wanted to share the original, or not the original, the, the evolving concept. Would be that, yeah, we'd, we'd have two hours at the end of the drill hall, we'd have some food, ideally we'll have some babysitters. For people that have little ones, but that there would be a short presentation highlighting what's in the budget and why. Then a chance for Q and A, and then break into small group discussion, and people can self-select. Into three main groups, one would be storm water management and green space. One would be pedestrian, mobility, traffic and parking, and one would be municipal facilities and infrastructure. And that way, people that are really interested in those topics have a chance to dig in a little bit more, and we could have council members and staff sort of floating around. And it's just an opportunity to get, I think, more input and more discussion than we would normally get from a budget document.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll see what's feasible in terms of any props or maps that we would wanna have available.
Right. Tech here, so.
Okay, well, I think moving it into, you know, before we, um, that, um, late April. Airtime period would be good. Early May, yeah.
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 Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right, good. Right, I'll gladly settle that. All right, uh, or have a new plan. All right, now, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great, okay.